We will now begin the City of Boynton Beach City Commissioners Meeting today at 6:30 PM. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance led by Commissioner Casello.
Let us pray, most holy eternal God, Father, Creator, Maker of all mankind, become first recognizing that Thou art God, and besides Thee, there is no other. We pray for our brothers and sisters in Texas, as that you look down upon those families, consider them, and continue to hold them in the hall of your hand. Father, we live in a world filled with perilous times. We ask for as we go through the mental health of individuals that we know not whose suffering. Help us to be able to cope and deal with whatever is going on in your name, we pray. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Would everyone please silence your phones and may I have a roll call, please?
Mayor Grant.
Here.
Vice Mayor Katz.
Here.
Commissioner McCray.
Here.
Commissioner Ramos.
Present.
Commissioner Casello.
Here.
All present, Mayor.
All right. Do I have any additions, deletions, or corrections to the agenda?
Oh, yes, Mr. Mayor, I would like to pull off the consent agenda, 6D. 6D.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to move up Agenda Item 12B in order to allow for the Speaker here to be able to leave sooner.
Yep. I'd like to move it in front of a public hearing, is that okay?
That is fine.
In addition, I'd also like to move up 12A, and I received a request, Vice Mayor Katz, would you be okay with moving up Item 12D, the discussion on public art?
Uh, where to?
With the other new business items before public audience.
Sure.
Okay. In addition, I'd also like to put on our future agenda items to look at the county's panhandling ordinance. I've almost hit somebody at Boynton Beach Boulevard and 95, and so I want to take a look into that. In addition, and on a separate item, I'd also like for staff to look at our sign ordinance regarding people holding up signs in the right of way. Is everything okay with that?
Yeah, we need to move.
Yeah. All right. Can I have a motion to approve Agenda as amended? A moment.
Second.
All those in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, all those opposed. We will now begin informational items by members of the City Commission. Vice Mayor Katz, would you like to begin?
Uh, sure. I have nothing to report.
All right. Commissioner McCray.
Thank you, sir. The Mayor and I, we attended the joint session of the Florida East Coast Baptist Association, and that was really one of the times that was held at our church, at St. John Missionary Baptist Church, and you got a chance to hear former Mayor Woodrow Hayes saying. I also got a chance to see the Mayor clapping his hands and giving praise, and I'm like saying, wow, you know, it was a different atmosphere, and I did get photos of the Mayor and myself as we spoke, but the lady that sent them to me when I got ready to send them to City Hall said, send a good look at them, so that was me, so I'm sorry, sir.
It's okay.
Thank you.
All right. Anything further?
I'm good.
All right. Well, we did attend also the ethics training sponsored by the Palm Beach County League of Cities on October 18th. On October 19th, I attended the MPO, which is now changing its name to the Palm Beach County TPA, Transportation Planning Agency. I attended a luncheon with Representative Slossburg and Representative Chiquet, and I did read for the record. On the 20th, I attended the Chambers Golf Tournament and the Boynton Beach Community High School's homecoming. On the 21st and 22nd, I made it to the Pirate Fest. I think we had a great turnout, and I'm looking forward to hearing from the numbers from the CRA. The 23rd, I did the Community Caring Center's Job Fair over at Benvenuto, and I commend them on all that they're doing to employ residents of Boynton Beach. On the 24th, I went to Congress Middle School to speak with the local, to speak to their newspaper about what it means to be Mayor of Boynton Beach. I had a luncheon with CPH and attended this Cub Scout meeting that evening. On the 26th, I attended the Odyssey Boundary. The middle school is closing, and so there's discussion of where residents of Boynton Beach childrens are going to go, whether it be Congress, Lantana, Carver, or Krista. On the 31st, I had breakfast with David Katz, who is a lobbyist for Washington Prime Real Estate LLC, and attended a lunch with the Executive Director of the Palm Beach County TPA. On the 1st, the city hosted the Chamber Networking, our Breakfast Over Easy, or Networking Over Easy, over at Chambers. It was a well-attended event. I also went to Bermuda Cay Condos to see what they're doing, and I had a presentation on Finland, and there is going to be a follow-up presentation on January 29th at 1:30 on my trips to Finland and Taiwan. On November 2nd, I attended a meeting with ATS regarding their future developments within the city. And yesterday, I had breakfast with County Commissioner Dave Kerner, and tomorrow, I want to make an announcement of healthcare in America. The League of Women Voters are going to speak about healthcare. For all those who do not, have not signed up, you need to go to healthcare.gov to sign up for next year's health insurance. And Thursday would be the last day to register with disasterrelief.gov, I believe, if there's any damages to your personal property or real estate from Hurricane Irma. And that is it for me. Commissioner Romulus.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Hopefully, everyone has turned back their time, their watches or their clocks by now, so I am not a big fan of the daylight savings, but we are here. So, just a few things to announce. I attended some events around the city that are of importance and that are of note, and also some disclosures to make. I attended the Justice for Corey Second Annual Event here in the city. Great opportunity to have women, mothers of the movement who have been affected by violence and also of police brutality, just to be able to speak up and talk about their experiences. So, great, great event to just really raise awareness around the issue. I also did read for the record and read here at the library with some amazing kids who really had fun reading about our little book, Quackers. Attended Pirate's Fest, great event, great turnout. Every year, it just seems to be getting better and better, so just kudos to our CRA staff for all the work that they do to make that happen. I also attended the Culinary Job Fair, so great work to the Community Caring Center for all of their work and their diligence to try to really employ all of our Boynton Beach residents and so many others also outside of the city limits. I pray that the efforts continue and that next year, we have a even more tremendous turnout. I also attended the CEO Build hosted by Habitat for Humanity. This was an amazing event where several CEOs from around Palm Beach County came to take off their business suits and high heels and put on some working hats and boots, and we helped build a home here for Javalia's family, a widow who has four children who she's raising. So, it was a great opportunity to give back, and I know that staff, Andrew, Lori, also participated in that CEO Build, so I want to thank them as well for their participation. I also assisted several volunteers, the community, who decided to get up and work on their own and really make some changes in their community that they were not happy with, and I'm referencing Boynton Beach Memorial Park on Seacrest and Woolbright there, where several individuals got up on a Saturday morning, bright and early, and we went out there and we painted it and made it look nice and pretty cool. So, if you've passed by there lately, or if you haven't, I would suggest you go pass by, because it was the hard work and diligence of some really dedicated volunteers, especially Debbie Lidle, who just came out and came together to really make that happen. I also attended the Firefighters Golf Tournament. This was a tournament to raise funds for children with juvenile diabetes, so this was an amazing event. I also had the opportunity to sit in an anti-terrorism class that was being hosted here, so this was, I believe, a first-time thing, and I hope that we continue to do this, because it was a great learning opportunity. I know Lori and some of our other staff were there, but I believe for the public as well, this is good opportunity to learn just defensive mechanisms and things to protect yourself, protect your children in the events that we've seen occurring more and more frequently lately. I also attended the grand opening of BurgerFi, so we are excited to have a BurgerFi here and within the city limits, so whoop, whoop for that. Definitely enjoyed myself there, had a veggie burger, trying to be healthy. And also sat down and met with John Markey regarding Town Square, and also David Katz regarding the High Ridge site. These are my, these are my comments for today. Thank you.
Commissioner Casello.
I'll be a lot shorter than that. I also had a phone conversation with Mr. David Katz, registered lobbyist, and I also like to give a shout-out to the Community Caring Center this Thursday, November 16th, November 16th, at Benvenuto's to have a celebration of the 30th year serving the communities here in Boynton Beach. And it's a fundraiser, and I would hope those that can attend would attend. As you know, the Community Caring Center does some great, great work here in Boynton Beach, and they really need our support. So, that's November 16th at Benvenuto's. If you can make it, we'd like to see you there. Thank you.
Mayor. For the announcements, yes?
Yeah, just, everyone jog my memory on that. I also received a phone call from David Katz, read the High Ridge plot.
All right.
Okay, Mayor, let me go again, since I jogged my memory as well. I did the ethics training, you know, by the League of Cities, but nobody's really saying anything, but I attended the Pirate's Fest. I'm just saying, I know it's a CRA issue, but we need to put a plug in. I'd like to tell Susan O'Yar, thank you for dressing up, that's the best I've seen you look, I love it. And I'd like to say to the Mayor, they said you dressed up, but I didn't see you, maybe we'll get photos. Okay, thank you.
And I blended in.
All right, thank you.
All right. Seeing no more informational items, moving on to announcements. Our first announcement is Jeanie Havlin and the Greater Boynton Beach Sister Cities Traveling Sauna Event that will be held at Intracoastal Park, 2240 North Federal Highway on Saturday, November 18th. Activities will begin at 10:00 AM. Yes?
Jeanie Havlin, Greater Boynton Beach Sister Cities. As the Mayor just indicated, this is a real Finnish traveling sauna. It is traveling this country in honor of Finland's Centennial Year, and by the end of the year, will have stopped in either 57 or 59 cities across the country. So, we're really excited to have it here. We also wanted it here to help recognize our newly established relationship with Rama, Finland. We have the city manager and the Chair of their City Commission coming over that weekend to participate in the sauna and also to meet some of our city officials. So, you're all invited, regardless of the weather. It will be at Intracoastal Park from 10 to 6:00. You can make reservations online for one hour at a time. There'll be slots for women only, men only, co-ed, so you can bring a family, a group, whatever. I think there's a link on the city website for it, but if you need any information, you can contact me at pointonsistercities@gmail.com. And I'm waiting for Commissioner Casello to make a comment.
All right, Jeanie, you're doing some great work, we appreciate it. Thank you.
And you will be there, right, regardless of the temperature?
With my flip-flops.
Okay. Do I need, I think you all have these, or should I pass them out?
You can leave them up in the back for everyone else to see as well.
Okay, do I? I'll leave them.
Next, we have an update from Boynton Beach Mental Health Committee by the Chair, Woodrow Hayes.
I would like to acknowledge the ones that are standing here with me are members of the Board of the Boynton Beach Mental Health Committee, and we are just pleased to be able to give this update after three years of our existence. You have the write-up in your handout and part of the backup material. I'll be reading most of everything, but not everything. One of the most important accomplishments this year was the production of our brochure, which I have here in my hand. It talks about finding hope and when you need hope, when you need help, that cares, the measures, that it's okay to talk about mental health, and it's okay to help when you have signs of mental illness, and offers a starter list of resources that's on the back. This is a collaborative project with Bethesda Health as part of their needs assessment. They are placing the brochure in all of the hospital waiting rooms. It is also being placed in many other locations in Boynton Beach. Brochures are available here and in the lobby, so we ask that you please take one. Our website information is printed on the back of the brochure. Secondly, we are actively engaged in the Healthier Boynton Beach Collective Impact Initiative on Family Caregiving, sponsored by Palm Healthcare Foundation, because caregivers are a high-risk group for mental illness. Members serve on the steering committee and on subgroups. In fact, the month of November is National Caregivers Month, so we are celebrating family caregivers at the First Annual Caregivers Recognition Luncheon this coming Thursday at the Intracoastal Park with good food, music, entertainment, gift, badges, to give them a feel-good day and let them know that they are appreciated. So, invite the entire council to come, if you would. We are proud to announce that new members of our committee, Mr. Jerry Taylor, the former Mayor of Boynton Beach, who helped to create the committee, and also Jeanie Taylor, who served as the liaison to the library, and Howard Williams, who manages our website and Facebook. We have 20 parks and recreation staff that receive mental health first aid training, as did the HR Department and some members of the Police Department, dispatchers, and The third year of our signature Psychology Day project at Boynton Beach Community High School, where we bring in mental health professionals to help students explore career opportunities in mental health, is being planned for early next year. In the coming months, we hope to work with the HR Department to schedule some lunch-and-learn sessions with our city employees. We have a productive team retreat in the month of August to review accomplishments and set priorities for the coming year. One of our priorities is to engage Boynton Beach faith leaders and their congregations in mental health education and awareness. The clergy in Boynton Beach are very much aware of this need and are ready to participate. The second priority is to expand networking to broaden community involvement in the work of Boynton Beach Mental Health Committee. To this end, the committee joined the Boynton Beach Chamber of Commerce to gain this important exposure. Last year, Book Retoned Promise honored two of our leaders for accomplishment on the local and county level with a Voice Award presentation. They went to Gerda Klein for community leadership at the December luncheon at the Cravis Center, and also to Yulz Trulli for my work with clergy, presented at an award luncheon for elected officials in October. We are humbled and encouraged by the special recognition. We have established a firm partnership with the April Jewish Family and Children Service to serve as Boynton Beach Communities Full Service Agency for Mental Health Services. These are just a selected few of the highlights that we have selected in this particular update. You may go to our website to find additional information. We are engaged with 14 community partners in education and awareness projects and activities. We are proud that the City of Boynton Beach, Mayor Grant, and the City Commissioners, the City Manager, and many departments are supportive of our mission and collaborate with us. We ask for your continued support to assure that we have the resources to engage in these and new initiatives to make Boynton Beach a model city for mental health. The books that the professionals use in the training, which I have a copy of right here, very excellent book they keep, these books are $20 each, and we try not to have the students pay for them. We get funds and we get other fundings to cover the costs. We're doing a great work, and we will continue, and we are pleading with you. In addition to your mental consent, which we really appreciate, we ask that you consider the Boynton Beach Mental Health Committee when you begin to divvy up your discretionary funds. Thank you for this opportunity to give you this update.
Next, we will proclaim November 11th to the 19th, 2017, as Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week. Would Sarah Also From please come to the podium over there to accept the proclamation.
City of Boynton Beach Proclamation. Whereas people from all walks of life, including families with children, employed and unemployed workers, elderly residents, veterans, disabled individuals, youth, and individuals are impacted by hunger and homelessness. And whereas while homelessness creates barriers to accessing essential services such as affordable healthcare, housing, childcare, and education, the costs of these basic necessities often contribute to hunger, food insecurity, and people experiencing homelessness on any given night in Palm Beach County. And whereas the theme of National Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week 2017 is focused on bringing America home by focusing on the laws passed by local governments around the nation which prevent people experiencing homelessness from doing life, sustaining activities such as sitting, lying, and sleeping in public spaces. And whereas, the City of Boynton Beach encourages all citizens to recognize that some people do not have housing and need support from citizens and private, public, nonprofit service entities. And whereas, the intent of Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week is consistent with the activities of the Homelessness Advisory Board, Homeless Coalition, Homeless and Housing Alliance, Palm Beach County Food Bank, and other service providers in Palm Beach County. Now, therefore, I, Stephen B. Grant, Mayor of the City of Boynton Beach, Florida, to hereby proclaim the week of November 11th, 19th of 2017 as Hunger and Homeless Awareness Week.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you. (applause). Mayor Grant, is that all right if I?
Yeah, please.
Okay. I promise to keep my remarks briefer than the proclamation. Thank you, Mayor Grant, and thank you, City Commissioners, for your ongoing support of the issues of hunger and homelessness. My name is Sarah Also From, I'm the Director of Community Relations at GL Homes. My company is a big supporter of the Lord's Place and the Homeless Coalition of Palm Beach County, and I'm also a volunteer with both of those nonprofits. And on behalf of the Homeless Coalition, the Homeless Advisory Board, and the Homeless and Housing Alliance, we do want to thank you for your ongoing support of two issues that many families face every single day. Thank you.
Welcome. Next, we have announcement of the City of Boynton Beach is hosting a flood awareness workshop on Wednesday, November 8th, from 5:30 to 7:00 at the Intracoastal Park Clubhouse. The workshop will answer residents' questions about flooding and city services. The newly revised FEMA flood insurance rate maps will be on display. For more information, contact Rebecca Harvey, Sustainability Coordinator, at 561-742-6494. The flyers available at the back of the chambers.
Mayor, excuse me, you skipped David as you went ahead and made a point about the flood.
Yep.
I'd like to go ahead and say to our staff, I want to tell you all, thank you for seeing your posters all over the city. I'm one of those that said we have to get the word out. You all have been doing an excellent job this year, I just want to tell you, keep up the good works. Thank you.
Thank you. And as for Item D, announcement by Recreation Parks Director, Wally Majors, about the upcoming holiday events.
Wally Majors, Recreation Parks Director. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners. Proud to announce that the holiday season is well underway, and we have a lot of events coming up. Starting on December 1st, the CRA is hosting their holiday movie. That's over at the Amphitheater by the Children's Museum. The Holiday Parade is on Saturday, December 2nd, starts at 4:00, followed thereafter by the Holiday Tree Lighting at approximately 5:30, again over by the Children's Museum. On Friday, December 8th, the Holiday Boat Parade, which is scheduled to begin at 6:00, and then on Friday, December 15th, Music on the Rocks, which again will be over by the Amphitheater. So, we hope everybody can join us for a fun and festive holiday season. Thank you, Mayor.
Yeah. Next, we have an announcement that the Boynton Beach East Water Treatment Plant Project received Envision Award for Sustainable Infrastructure. Would Utility Project Manager, Michael Lo, please come accept the award? The Boynton Beach Ion Exchange Resin Plant and East Water Treatment Plant Improvements Project has received the Institute for Sustainable Infrastructure's Envision Bronze Award. The award recognized the city's project for its environmental, social, and economic benefits. The upgraded East Water Treatment Plant processes 24 million gallons of water per day to support the potable water needs of a growing population for decades to come. The project protects the local environment and drinking water supply by avoiding saltwater intrusion and diversifies water sources to reduce dependence on the superficial aquifer. The plant is now equipped with a state-of-the-art MEEX water pretreatment system that removes organic compounds and color from the water while reducing chemical use. Other improvements to the plant include filter valve replacements, replacement of high-service pumps with premium efficiency pumps and motors, improved storm water management, modifications to the disinfection system, upgraded security features, and a new 3 million gallon water storage tank. The project also includes a public art installation designed to create a connection between visitors to the facility and the facility itself. And I'd also like to comment that it looks very cool, the water tower with the LED-colored lights.
Thank you, Mayor, Michael Lo, Manager, Technical Services at Utility. Yeah, a lot of work went into ensuring that we recycled a lot of the equipment that was pulled out, and that everything we put in was much more efficient than its predecessor, including the lighting, which you just mentioned, which is about 10% of the power consumption of the previous lights that we had on the tower, and far more effective. So, we're able today just to show a very brief video, which explains a little bit about the project and how it ties in to the future development of the city.
The city utility serves approximately 113,000 people. We are anticipating that to grow in the next 20 years to 140,000 people.
Really, the growth has been inspired by a younger generation wanting to come in and the older generation liking to have access to everything. What they're looking at doing is really recreating that downtown feel and along the waterfront.
So, one of the challenges we had with the growth is, is we also are close to the ocean, and we have a well field that we pull our potable water from. In Florida, we have a very porous environment aquifer, and so as that water's being pulled out of the well, it's pulling that ocean salt water into the well. So, the only other place we can go is to move west. So, the city also owns a water plant and a well field west of 95. We'll move that water to the east plant, treat it where the growth is, and then put it back out to serve the growth that's going to occur. The problem is, when you do that, it's a different source of water, meaning it had different parts in it, different things in it, so we have to provide different treatment.
As part of the project, we installed a As part of the project, we installed a MIEX pretreatment system, which treated the western well field water. That way, we can combine the two water supplies, and as a result of that, we had to improve, really, a lot of the components of the rest of the facility. We did a lot of things along the way that were more renewal and replacement, but key to making sure that facility would last through the times that they needed it, as far as supporting the economic growth in the area.
This was actually a great project for design bill. We pulled the best brains in and said, what is the best way to build this project? So we were able to make decisions actually very quickly, based on real numbers and real costs, and still have complete control over what we wanted built.
We did a lot of things along the way to reduce the actual cost to the project. As a result, we showed about $3 million worth of savings. We were able to put in the LED lighting, which was a big concept for the community, but it was not part of the original project. The artwork at the front of the park is going to be a constant reminder of what's going on at the facility.
CDM Smith does a very good job listening, acting, responding, and fixing problems when they come up. Yeah, this project's going to give the community the ability to grow, which it needs to do. If you don't have your basic infrastructure in place, you can't function that way. You cannot grow. I think the other thing it does is it guarantees the citizens and the customers that in their lifespan, in their kids' lifespan, they don't have to worry that they don't have a reliable source of water. So that's really important to us as utility executives, to make sure we give that confidence to our customers.
Our next announcement is the annual reappointment of advisory board seats with terms expiring in December 2017. The following boards will have openings: Arts Commission, Building Boards of Adjustments and Appeals, Education and Youth Advisory Board, Employee Pension Trust Fund Board, Library Board, Planning and Development Board, Recreation and Parks Board, and Senior Advisory Board. Information of the boards and applications are available online. Applications can also be taken at the city's clerk's office in City Hall or sent to cityclerk@bbfl.us. All applicants must be registered voters in Palm Beach County. Next, City Hall will be closed on Veterans Day, Friday, November 10th, 2017, and City Hall will also be closed for the Thanksgiving holiday on Thursday, November 23rd, and Friday, November 24th, 2017. We will now jump ahead to new business, item A. I am requesting approval for $300 of my community support funds to be donated to the Meant to Make It Incorporated. Is Cory here to speak a little bit about it?
Evening all. Mayor, thank you for the opportunity. My name is Cory Bochet. I'm a resident, lifelong resident of Boynton Beach here. I spent a lot of time in the heart of Boynton Beach. Greater St. Paul is the church that I fellowship at. I had a lot of fun playing basketball and football growing up at the Hester Center. I also attended Pointe County Elementary. So just coming back home after going away to college, I was able to just to identify something that I think is necessary within our community, and I was able to create a nonprofit organization, which is a young men's mentoring program. So Mayor Grant, thank you for the donation. I've had two events so far. I just recently got my 501(c)(3), so now I plan to, you know, reach out to get donations and grants to help build that operational budget for the program. I had one event, it was a community trash pickup back in May. Commissioner McCray, thank you for donating those goods and materials to help with that event. And my second event I had was in July at the Intracoastal Park, and it was the Community Connection, which I plan to be a staple of the program going forward. That program is basically designed to have Boynton Beach PD and different law enforcement agencies come out and speak to the community, speak to the youth about real-world issues. So we did that. We had a pretty good turnout for Boynton Beach PD, so I see a lot of them here, so I thank you guys for that. And along with the Real World Forum that we do with the kids, we kind of coupled that with a field day, so they get to play recreational activities, relay races, flag football, just to kind of build that positive rapport with law enforcement, you know, just going forward. So, you know, the program, right now, like I said, it is just a mentoring program, but I plan for it to be a staple within a family enrichment center. We do have the Hester Center here. It's near and dear to my heart. I just think that we need something a little more proactive within our community, just to, you know, speak to different services, not just recreational needs, but educational needs, health and wellness, as well as parenting classes and counseling. So that's my goal. Like I said, the mentoring program is just kind of a staple to get there. Thank you.
Right, Cory. Before you leave, I was in the city manager's office, and then I said, well, what kind of program is that? And she said, I don't know. And I, I just got up and started speaking. I'm putting the name with a face.
Yep.
So I want to tell you thank you, and I'm going to go ahead and tell the city clerk, you might not get it this time, but I'm going to give you $500 because from my discretionary fund, because I enjoy what you all did for MK Boulevard, and I'm glad to see a youth in the community coming back to make a difference where they live. Many times, people get education, and they move away. Thank you for staying here.
Thank you.
Regarding the rules, can I get all those in favor of $300 of my community support funds? Aye?
Aye.
And do I have a second for Commissioner McCray's request?
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Thank you. Next item is B. Proposed Resolution Number 17-113, Resolution of City of Boynton Beach in Support of Florida House or Representatives House Memorial 263, Urging the President to Extend Haiti's Temporary Status Designation for at least 18 months beyond its current January 22nd, 2018 expiration date. Do we have someone from Representative Al Jiquet's office to comment?
Mayor Grant, and to the commission, as always, thank you. And we want to, well, on behalf of Representative Jiquet, I want to say thank you for presenting this resolution in support of our House Memorial. We think that it's very important to extend Haiti's temporary protected status, because although Haiti has made improvements since the earthquake back in 2010, the country has been faced with a lot of unforeseen circumstances, such as the Calera outbreak, killing thousands of people, and several hurricanes like Matthew and Irma, which destroyed the crops. And that's a major economic engine for the country. To send 60,000 people back to Haiti right now will just be a disaster for the country, and will also have a big impact here in the United States. And the representative and I, we traveled to Washington, DC, last week and met with several members of Congress and the Senate, and we were glad to see that this is one of the issues that's a bipartisan support. And a lot of them agree that this designation should be extended. So again, we want to thank you, and I can't stay here for the entire duration of the commission meeting. The representative, right now, is in Tallahassee for committee week. I myself, I'll be traveling there as soon as I leave here. So again, we want to thank you, and to everyone here, reach out to your congressmen, congresswomen, and just urge them to support this designation. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further discussion from the board?
I'd like to make a comment. When I ran for reelection, you know, that's one of the things that I said that I would support, and I'm glad to see that you all have put in the initiative there. And with the resolution here, I'm going to go ahead and offer motion that we do what is requested of us as a city.
Any further discussion? May I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next, we have a discussion on public art, as requested by Vice Mayor Katz.
Yeah, I didn't put this up here to be any sort of kind of long-winded or detailed discussion. I just, in lieu of kind of recent art displays, I just wanted to try to emphasize that, in keeping with the marine and fishing village theme downtown, and recognizing that all different manner of people appreciate public art, and whether that's, you know, very expensive pieces of art, or very average or low-value pieces of art. I think that the reaction I got in response to some recent art was to try to pay closer homage to the idea of the marine and fishing style, you know, theme of the downtown, and also to be inclusive of different levels of art, I guess I should say, that, you know, it's Boynton Beach, this is a hard town, it's a working-class, middle-class town, and that, you know, people have different views on art, you know, in every way. Just try to be more inclusive of, I guess, you know, regular people art, maybe I'm not like an art aficionado, but just, you know, normal art. It doesn't have to be half-million-dollar pieces of art and fancy-named artists from New York or wherever, just more inclusive public art. So, you know, I didn't want to, I realized if I didn't want to spark a detailed conversation about art, I probably should have never said anything about art, because it's a topic that everyone has very strong opinions about. But that was kind of my gist, just, you know, to me, more stuff that looks like marine-related stuff, and more stuff, you know, from a local and maybe, you know, less expensive perspective to make it kind of a middle-class type art thing, not like a New York Met-type art thing, is best I can describe it.
All right.
I apologize if I offended anybody.
All right. Yeah, I agree with what you're saying, and that, you know, the Boynton Beach Art District, that does have that sort of working-class price range. I know that that is expanding, and that's something maybe we can discuss at the CRA Board. In addition, I know that our art center does great work with the children of Boynton Beach, and I think as our city manager, sometimes offered them some money for the award-winning. Is that correct, Lori?
Oh, I bought, I procured two pieces.
And so I think, I guess, the notice to Debbie is that we definitely want to see more art in the community, and so I really appreciate you bringing that up.
Right, let me go ahead and put my two cents in. Debbie, I want to say thank you for the pamphlet. The piece that's right out here across from, I just said from the liquor store, that's what I call it. I was going down the road, and some guy stopped me, said, hey, Commissioner, come over here. And I'm saying, huh? I went over. But anyway, although they was flabbergasted, and they was laughing, and having a great ball, I said, at least you all know what art is, they said. Maybe that's why we like music. But anyway, now I got the pamphlet, and I can take it out there and show them that arts come in all forms, so thank you.
Just a couple of statements. Debbie, I guess you can answer this. When we, when the Arts Advisory Board, is that what we have?
Arts Commission, yes.
Arts Commission, okay. When they decide to place a piece of art or select a piece of art, how does that go about? Why are we getting not local, or are we getting local? That I don't even know. Why are we like, you know, New York artists and these big fancy names? Why not somebody like, you know, right down the road over here?
Oh, I'm glad you asked that question. Debbie Colstebay, Public Art Manager. In fact, our collection, our public art collection is very diverse. You may not know it, but it really is. We have a total of 81 artworks right now in the city. And out of the, this is considering the public and the private collection at a time. So out of the whole collection, we have, if you look at the city collection, 14% is of Boynton Beach artists, 27% is local artists, and 18%, only 18% is state, national, international combined. When you look at the private collection out of the 30 artworks, 27% is Boynton Beach artists, 33 local, and 40 combination state, national, and international. So just like a library collection, you want to have early readers, you want to have easy readers, you want to have intellectual reading, you want to have local artists and authors, and you want to have international artists. So that's what we try to do with our collection. And yes, the process is very clear and precise. It's part of our ordinance. We start with a selection process. There's a whole list of items, which I can go through if you'd like. There's artwork criteria that they look at for each sighting of the artworks, and the artwork placement is very critical. And then also the artist qualification. So some cases, you know, the artworks are, calls to artists require a little bit more sophistication. That's why you see the national artist sometimes on here. But we do, again, a diverse collection. We have many artworks that are mostly representational of artworks, not so much abstract. Basically, out of all of our 81 artworks, we have three that can be considered abstract at this point. The rest of them are mostly representational. So that kind of gives you a feeling of the flavor, and the board, who is very diverse themselves, come from all disciplines and all ethnicities, they weigh in on the subject and really have long conversations about that. Some of them are here today, which they can speak on some of this information as well. But the other thing we wanted to do is, the piece that you're talking about on this brochure, and I'll pass a couple of these down. This piece is by, for Ocean 500, and this developer, this is a great story, because when the owners of this project learned about the process, they can select their own artist, or they can do a call to artists. And there's three owners of this property. Each one of them sought an artist that they chose to work with. Albert Paley is one, what was connected to one of the artists in the Northeast, and he literally came to the site, looked at our community, looked at where the art was going to be located, and really felt about what could be created here. He won, out of the other two artists, again, the private developers had their own little contest, which I think is a great story. And then they brought the concept to the Arts Commission. They had a lot of discussion about the art form, they also had a lot of discussion about the placement of the art, the relativity to the site and the building. And they even came back, the developer came back with that rendering, I think you all have seen, which shows the rendering of the piece with the art relative to that space. So they deliberated quite long about the piece itself, the iconic presence it's going to bring to the city, anchoring the one end to the other end. And the other thing that we really wanted to do is then to bring a national exhibition to the city, to call attention to us. We're launching, we've gotten great media already on it, and we're going to continue to get national media on this exhibition, because it is a national exhibition. Typically, cities don't do this level of exhibition, but our city is probably, I guess, a little more progressive in that respect. But we do try to balance out our collection. Definitely have fish in our collection already, lots of marine-based artworks. So we are going to look at that balance when we move forward with selecting artwork.
Did you hear that, Commissioner Katz, that we've got fish in?
That's all right. More fish.
Something tells me you were ready for that question, Debbie. Thank you.
Well, I wanted you to understand, we do have a diverse collection. And, you know, the best thing I want to just showcase, if you go to theboyntonbeacharts.org, you get straight to the front page, you can take a virtual tour and see all of the artwork in the collection, make your own decision about the diversity of the art that we have right now in our collection.
Thank you. So I just have one question, because you said that the, you know, the developers have kind of direct control over the artist they pick, and the piece that ultimately is presented to the commission, is that kind of the gist of it?
Well, there's two ways that they can, they can select their own artist, however, they must come in front of the Arts Commission to get approved. So they present a proposal, a conceptual idea, the artist has to be a qualified public artist. So they have to have background information about their qualifications and three resources, which we research to make sure that they're qualified artists, and that they're prominent artists, let's say, or that they're capable of doing this type of work. Public art is very different than art in a studio, because it has to meet the harsh, you know, the Florida environment, it has to be maintained properly, so it has to really last a long time. This artist obviously speaks to all these things, plus the integrity of that part of the work, and the prominence of the artist is very important, too. So this project is a huge project, so it's relative to the size of the project itself. However, with that said, I mean, yes, we do offer to do a call to artists if they would like as well, and then we have a separate selection panel, which our board members are participating in, so the stakeholders select the qualifications of that artist, and then the process can move along that way, which is probably more appropriate to what we'll be doing to our Town Square Plan art selection.
When the developers typically come, you know, to the advisory board with potential art, do they, how many pieces of art do they typically present to the board? Is it, you know, they bring one, and they say, this is kind of what we want to do, and then, and then the board has that one choice to pick or reject? Or do developers typically come with multiple potential art ideas that the board would then weigh in on and give preference to that would influence the developers' ultimate?
Well, the board is basically, they put aside their own preferences, and they really look at criteria that speaks to the project. Like I said, there is a whole list of those things, like appropriateness to the site, the collection, the appropriateness of commissioning agency, originality, creativity, you know, signature, iconic work, visual aesthetics, engagement, design and form, and innovation excellence, so, you know, conceptual, technical, and technique, site, context. So there's a lot of thought that goes into it, there's a lot of discussion. Usually, they only have one presentation of one item. That's correct.
So that's the kind of crux of the question. So when developers present potential art to the board, on average, are they only presenting one option to the board?
Correct, usually.
So is that not something, at least to me, I would want, to me, that feels like the board doesn't have any input, because how often have you seen? like the Board doesn't have any input because how, how often have you seen that the Board has rejected a piece of art that's been proposed by a developer? When they present one piece of art, the Board says, "We don't want this, please bring something else back."
I think they'll guide the conceptual idea if it's not appropriate for the site and, you know, for the location or for the community, they will guide it. And there is guidance upfront ahead of time because we do have our visioning plan, which they're aware of, and I make them aware of that. So, when we have the discussion initially, in the DART meetings, I said to them, "These are the type of artworks that the Arts Commission and our Board is celebrating in the city," which is kinetic, glass, and eco-art. So, again, we don't push those art forms, but that's one of the things that makes us different from other cities. So, we try to look at site areas, we try to give them ideas, we try to show them a whole array of type of artworks, like examples of what they can do, and it's kind of up to them to figure out what works best for their project, what represents their project to the community, what speaks to their community. 500 Ocean is a very high-end rental community, so they felt this piece of artwork was most representational for their, their particular project. It's not always going to be the same artist, it's not always going to be the same type of artwork, it's going to definitely, you know, we guide them through that process.
So, on average, the, the instances where the art's been rejected by the Commission has, has been infrequent?
I think not so much rejected, but guided on a certain other path that maybe make it a little bit more appropriate to, you know, what we're looking for.
Because I think, I only got one more comment.
Okay.
I think it kind of, man, I stepped in it.
Art is very subjective, as we say, isn't it?
And I feel like this is the most robust conversation we've had about public art up here, so maybe that's a good thing.
Yes, thank you.
Absolutely.
I'm happy, thank you.
Maybe, you know, it's for the, for the Board to decide with regards to the, the art ordinance itself, but I would personally like to see it be presented to developers, that they present options to the art Advisory Board so that it's not, "Here's the one thing we're bringing to you, are you going to reject this and we have nothing else, or are you going to accept it?" Where it kind of feels like a rubber stamp. I would prefer it if, you know, if the Commission and how it would go about this with regards to the ordinance to, you know, to make it so they present options. That way, we get a, a more diverse set of potential art coming to the city as opposed to, "Here's a building that's going up, they have X amount of funds, they've chosen this piece for this spot." Because again, I feel like just based on kind of what you're saying is that it's presented to the Art Commission, it's usually one option, and, and infrequently at best are they rejected. So, I just, you know, that's, again, it's something for the Board to decide if they're in agreement with me or want to further the discussion that, you know, maybe, maybe the ordinance should ask for two different, you know, potential pieces or three, just to give options to the Board.
I don't think the ordinance specifies one or two.
I want to make a comment quick, is that I actually attended the Arts Commission before I became Mayor, and I saw what was going on with the Marriott Town Place and how they were picking their art. They ended up picking a mosquito that worked as a bug killer. You know, it had the electrical, you know, attraction to kill the bugs, and so that was one of their arts that they had. They had an octopus as well, and so there's plenty of different things going. I think that, you know, because you haven't, I don't know if you've been to the Arts Commission meeting before?
Every, every minute.
You have? Oh, yeah, I know.
They send us the minutes.
Yeah, absolutely, but if, if you go there, you really get to see that they're having vibrant discussions on this, and yes, they don't always agree for this, and there's plenty of times where the majority agrees with it, where, and there's a minority that doesn't agree with the option. And so, I think, you know, that all the times that, you know, we more or less agree on all the things and disagree less. And so, I think it's, you know, put it under advisement for this next year to see what goes on and get, and, so that we can see exactly what happens if, you know, the artists are really only coming up with one idea and that there's a hundred percent success rate and everyone agrees with it, it's different than what, you know, is, what has been said, I guess, today, that it's a rubber stamp sort of process.
Well, I think I'd like to parallel it to the process for planning and zoning when building comes in. They come in with their concepts and ideas, and through the, the staff's input, you know, there's some gyration of that, and there's some manipulation, and there's, you know, that's kind of what they do with the Arts Commission as well, there's some discussion about it, like you said. And if they're not happy with, you know, what they see, and if it doesn't, if it doesn't fit the criteria, and again, that's based the same way you would do in a DART meeting or planning and zoning process, you know, you have to meet these certain criteria, you don't want to like necessarily dictate it. But, on the other hand, we do many selection panel processes, that's where the East Water Treatment Plant project came in, that was a selection process where we went out and qualified the artists, the teams came in, we gave them a, a stipend to go ahead and actually present their concepts and proposals, and they had two different concepts and proposals. We awarded one of the teams that concept, and then they fulfilled the, the concept. So, it's not always that way, that's an option they can do, but we do many selection processes with committees, and the committees are usually the stakeholders in that project, and they, again, do the same thing. They, there's a lot of communication about, you know, the, the criteria of what you want to see in a project, which is, you know, some of the things that you saw for the public art, for the Town Square Plan, that workshop that we did on the August 25th, that input from the community is very important, so we look to do a lot of that engagement so that we then can use that criteria to create the future art projects in the city.
Thank you.
Just, yeah. Debbie, that you, Debbie, you had mentioned, back up your, in your conversation there, you said it's like the P and D Board, where they get a building and they go over it and they, they put their touches on it, what they think. But that also comes before the Commission here, and we have the final say. As far as the artwork part, that doesn't come before this Commission at all. The final say is, stays right there on your Board.
Arts Commission, correct.
Why wouldn't that come before the Commission for our review and so we could put our two cents in?
Well, again, art is very subjective, and that's why you appointed the Board to make those decisions.
So, we could, so that's something we could, that's something we could incorporate, that the final decision that come before us and we could, you know, we could have a discussion on it, correct?
Well, that's typically how most of the programs work.
Debbie, I'm going to ask a sleight of place, Commissioner McCray has one more question.
Sure.
Right, I, I don't have a question, but you know, I really want to tell you and your group that you all succeeded, you all got us talking, you got the community talking about art, I'm just saying whether we like art or not, you all succeeded and you got our attention, thank you.
All right.
Thank you, thank you very much.
So, I'm going to move on to this.
I just want to, for a future agenda, I would like to have the Arts Commission decision come up before the Commission so we could just have a discussion on it.
Would you like to review the ordinance?
Review the ordinance and have that discussion, okay?
All right.
Thank you.
I have some Board members, did you want to hear from them too?
No, thank you.
Now, he stepped in it, we're getting him out of it.
All right.
Thank you, thank you very much.
All right.
However, if the Arts Commission's would like to speak in public audience, we will allow individual speakers to three-minute presentations to discuss any item that is no longer on the, the agenda. The line.
Good evening, Jerry Taylor, 1086 Southwest 26th Avenue. In the past year, this Commission loaned the golf course a substantial amount of money to replace all the greens at the golf course, and that work has been accomplished, and while they did a very good job at that, they also had to deal with, in the past month, the golf course has received, I believe, something like 27 inches of rain, is that correct? Yeah, 30-some now? So, that's another really task to get the golf course when that's happening. But I can tell you, I have been out there for the last three Saturdays, I got to play two of them, one of them I couldn't because of the rain, but I can tell you that the greens are outstanding, but not just the greens, the fairways, the entire golf course is now a showplace, it's just, it's just incredible. And I've played all over this county, most of the courses in this county, and I can tell you, right now, you can be very proud of what you have out there, it's a showplace. I know Commissioner Cassello gets out there, if you don't get to go out there, you might want to just go out and take a look, but if you have people that you know that like to golf, you want to promote your golf course because now it's a gem for Boynton Beach. And I can tell you, the employees out there are user-friendly employees, they make you comfortable, they make you feel like you want to be there and you want to come back. So, I want to tell you, it was a good investment, you got a great golf course.
Susan Oyer, 140 Southeast 27th Way, I want to say thank you Commissioner Romulus for taking time out of your very busy schedule to judge the Seacrest Estates Halloween decorating contest. Timothy won this year, he's on Southeast first place, you did a great job, he did an outstanding job, so thank you. I hope I can count on you to judge our Hanukkah Christmas Kwanzaa Festivus decoration contest in Seacrest Estates, thank you very much. I'd also like to say thank you to Commissioner McCray for the compliment, I'll be sure and remember that I need to wear my Pirate Fest, very low-cut pirate costume whenever I'm coming up for anything I really want, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, my name is Joan McCurio, I live at 68 Vista Del Rio. On Monday morning, I saw something that really made me very sad. The young man that comes by in the truck to collect our recycle was doing the work of two men, not one man, okay? He had to drive the truck, jump out, run, I mean, he, thank God he was young, I'm watching his running so quickly to empty these bins, I guess he's got to be in and out of our community in a certain amount of time. So, finally, I, I went out with a cold bottle of water and I said, "Would you lose your partner today?" And he, he didn't say anything. So, I went back in because I live in a cul-de-sac, I'm at the beginning of the cul-de-sac and he had to go, you know, all the way around. I called the, the city, and I got a girl by the name, I think, I believe it was Stephanie on the phone, and she, she, "I don't know, I don't know, I'm going to give you supervisor, I'll give you..." whatever his name was, I didn't catch the name. And he said to me, "No," he said, "That's the way it's been for 15 years, that's not true." I've, I'm up around that, that time in the morning, I've seen many times where the truck goes by and there's one man driving the truck and one man that kind of jumps on the truck and just holds on until he's maybe, if there's a few houses that don't have recycled bins and then he jumps off and, you know, does his job, but there's two men. Of course, the other ones, yes, they'd only need one truck. So, he said, well, he says, "If you don't like it," he says, "Go to the Commissioners' meeting," so here I am, and that's what I...
Well, I, I just want to comment, I'm, I'm just saying, you know, for 15 years it has not been like that, I'm just saying, we used to have two people working there, I'm just saying, we'll look into it, yeah, and thanks for coming.
I'm glad, I feel for you.
It, it is, we get it.
Thank you.
Thank you for that comment.
Hi, my name is Cindy Falca de Carrato, I live at 316 Northwest 1st Avenue. I stand before you today in regards to the marijuana store just over I-95 with its big signs on the windows that say "No Appointment Necessary," "Walk-ins Welcome," and a large pot leaf on the sign. This is not what was told to us, the public, let me reiterate. It was said that it was to be an inconspicuous building, that it would be a drive-through, that those who were prescribed by their own doctors would go inconspicuously and pick up their dope, excuse me, marijuana or medical cannabis as you call it. This is not what this is. This is a place that looks like it's set up for recreational marijuana use in the near future and is quite in your face when you drive by. It looks like it's for the money. Let me share a conversation that I've had with this young man that comes by my house in the morning, which I will not mention his name. He said to me, the reason why he's for marijuana, and he's a very much involved in our community, that he said, I want, that he wanted me to know that he wanted marijuana legalized because many college students who get busted with a certain amount of marijuana get their careers ruined. And I said, "How sad, then you change the law on what amount you can have on you and/or let's do one thing better, let's educate people on learning how to work with coping skills." As Nami has mentioned about the mental health, and I'm going to share a little bit about that as well. They said no one died, he said to me, "No one ever died from marijuana." I reminded that said person that my son died and the only drug in his body was THC. I gave him information about the drug marijuana and facts about the deaths and scientific proof that a person said it was, and he said it was false. I gave more pamphlets and scientific proof, but they did not want, he did not want the truth. In communicating further, the whole gist of our conversation, as I just shared, was to legalize marijuana so that people do not have their careers ruined. How many more people have to get hurt and suffer because of the few wanting to smoke what you call medical cannabis, what I call dope, because it's THC which is a mind-altering drug? I know that some might not care, as was stated by a Commissioner regards to their dying mother who had a cancer, and if pot was legal, she would have given it to her mother, not even listening nor caring that a perfectly healthy child in a moment of distress made a bad decision because he wasn't in his right mind and was, was affected by the THC, a mind-altering drug. He made a terrible decision on that day, June 29th, 1999, a day before his 22nd birthday, the day my precious son took his last breath, the day my Ricky died. In mental health book, which I have here, which I'm glad that Nami had brought it up, they do give it out to you free, I took a mental health course a couple of weeks ago. I'd like to turn to page 75, and I do not know why the mental health did not speak out about this in regards to marijuana. It says right here, "Marijuana abuse is associated with other mental health problems. People who use marijuana are more likely to suffer from a range of other mental health problems."
Thank you.
And I would like to pass these out to all, each and every one of you if I could, please.
Appreciate it.
And I have more at the back table.
Anyway, she's passing out, it's my understanding that, that particular building she's talking about, that's just two doctors that are in there where you can go and get a prescription, it's not a dispensary of any sort or shape or form.
Correct, I was actually there, it's more of a thrift shop right now, there is no doctors prescribing anything yet.
Right, thank you.
My name is Matthew Arivalan, residing in 5102 Mahogany Drive, Boynton Beach, Florida. I'd like to bring up three items for discussion. Item number one, the flood awareness workshop that's planned for November 8th, I suggest that it would, it address the rising water levels and educate the residents on the precautions that they could take to be prepared for the future. Item number two, I noticed a couple of small glitches in the city website. One of them was the public notices section. Currently, it talks about the meeting that was actually planned on June 12th with regards to Phase 1 agreement for Town Square redevelopment. I'm to understand that there were other recent meetings that were held on the same subject, so maybe the public notices section could be updated. And the other issue on the website was, that's a link for Tire Amnesty Week, June 5th until the 9th, that link does not work, but I would like to know what Tire Amnesty Week stands for and what does it mean to me as a resident. So, the website could, website could be updated to provide more information on that subject. Item number three, the city provides homeowners and businesses with recycled bins and carts to separate trash that could be recycled or, or trash that cannot be recycled or hazardous trash, vegetative material, stuff like that. However, with regards to apartment communities, we have one trash compactor where all the residents dump all kinds of trash, recycled, non-recycled, hazardous, hazardous material or building debris, everything altogether. So, I don't know if the city takes the responsibility in sorting out the trash when they collect from, whatever they collect from apartment communities. If they don't, probably I'll suggest that we could have some kind of standard for apartment communities, some kind of a mandate that would make them regulate in terms of what kind of practices they need to take in terms of segregating or sorting out recycle and non-recycle waste material, thank you.
So, moving forward is that commercial locations and industrial locations are not required to recycle, that is an extra charge for them. All residents are included to have recycling. As for multifamily homes, they, I believe, actually have to pay extra for recycling, and if that is the case, no? So, multifamily homes do not have to pay extra for recycling, however, if they don't request the recycling bins, then we don't have, they've never done that, so I would speak to the property manager or the HOA president to request recycling bins.
Jeff is, is here, yeah.
We can refer him to Jeff, he'll catch him up.
I would speak with Jeff Livergo in the back and he will explain.
And he will also explain Tire Amnesty to you as well, I'm just saying, he's right there. I'm just saying, he's right there.
Okay.
And also reasons why we tend to not do recycling in multifamily facilities. He'll explain that to you as well. Thank you.
He's getting up for you now.
All right. And do we have any further public announcements or public audience?
I'll just comment real quick on, on something. I do want to take a second to thank our utilities department, starting with their leader, of course, Colin Groff and Down. I actually took some time to bring them some donuts this week, just to say thank you for all the work that they did for the communities in Lake Pointe Estates. They had some extreme flooding over the last weekend and those guys were out there all hours of the day trying to pump down water to help those residents who had been having cars flooded, homes flooded. So the city did a great part to really just step up and very quickly at that to respond to that situation. So I do want to make sure I take the time to say thank you to the utilities department for, for all their work. Thank you, the stormwater curve especially.
Any announcements? Moving on to administrative. Appoint the eligible members of the community to serve in vacant positions. There's currently no applications for advisory board appointments. Next is discuss whether commission wishes to change the following. Commission dates in 2018. On Tuesday, September 18th, 2018, it is the day before Yom Kippur, which is, I believe, is September 19th. So that is called Kol Nidre. I'd like to move it to September 17th, that Monday. And as for the 2018 general elections for the county and state, I'd also like to move that to the Monday, November 5th.
I would not be okay with the November 5th, Monday. I would be okay with moving it to the Wednesday following.
That sounds good. Is anybody else in agreement?
That's on that, November, be November the 7th.
Correct.
As long as I got that Monday, that's good. I can go ahead and give up that one. Okay.
All right.
Motion to approve.
All right. All those in favor states so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Meetings have been moved. Next is authorize members of the Planning and Development Board to attend a planning officials training workshop on Friday, November 17th, 2017, at the Village of Palm Springs, Florida.
My question is, would that be a cost to the city?
It's $25 a person. I know several people that attended last year. I was signed up, but I ended up not being able to go. They do an outstanding job, the American Planning Association, and I would even encourage, encourage our elected officials, if you have the time that day to go. But I think it would be a great training opportunity at a very low cost for our planning and zoning board members if they're interested.
Have anybody already signed up? Let me go another route.
I don't know. We haven't, I haven't canvassed the board or asked them. I just thought I'd bring this to the commission first to discuss, you know, advisory board so-called travel or expenditure. But then we would ask and see who would be interested in going.
The price includes lunch. I'm okay with spending up to, you know, what is that, $150, $175 for the regulars and alternates to go to the meeting if they're able to.
I'm in favor of it because we're looking for people to serve on boards and we want them, if they're serving, at least to be knowledgeable. I'm in favor of it, so that's...
Anything else from the board? May I have a motion to approve?
A move.
All those in favor states so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Moving on to consent agenda. Currently, we have item D pulled. Is there any other items from consent agenda that wishes to be pulled? Seeing none. Commissioner Casella, would you like to begin?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. And this is about our special magistrate that we have that listens to our traffic ticketing. I wonder if Mr. Stokes in the audience at all? Mr. Stokes, are you here? And the reason why I ask if he's here is because on this consent agenda, Mr. Stokes is asking for a $60-an-hour raise. And I figure that if you're asking for a $60-an-hour raise, you'd want to explain to this commission or your employer why you need $60 more an hour for your work. Mr. Stokes currently makes $140 an hour. He currently wants to go up to $200 an hour. We pay our city attorney, who does a heck of a lot more than a traffic magistrate does, $205. I don't see a need for this increase. We hired this out, this one out for a RFP, I believe. The bid was $140 per hour. Mr. Stokes works approximately every time he comes in, about two, two and a half hours, depending on how many tickets are there. Now, his job basically is to sit there and say guilty. Very seldom does he find anyone not, not guilty. I can't go, if we're going to pay $200 an hour for somebody to sit there to listen to traffic tickets, which I might remind this commission that we just got turned back on, so we don't even know if it's going to be profitable or not profitable. I would ask this commission to refuse this request. And I also would ask the city manager, anytime that one of our vendors or one of our employees is asking for a $60-an-hour raise, and not be put on a consent agenda. That we put it on the agenda and have a discussion about it. Now, I don't know how many more of us up here had noticed that on the consent agenda, but I'm glad I did. And I would ask this commission to refuse this request for a $60-an-hour raise.
I did speak with the city manager about that and basically, it is from 2013, so there would be no increase for the past four years in any sort of costs. The reason why I'm for this is because we don't have another option right now, in the sense that if he, we don't have another magistrate. I believe that we need to go request other board, other magistrates in the community for another RFP or, you know, quest for bids. But until the, we have more magistrates, $200 an hour is a, actually is not that much more than what is, you know, I'm sorry. $200 for a magistrate's hours is normal, reasonable time or the cost. And so I'm for this and that the fact that we can move forward with other magistrates moving in the future.
I, I would recommend that if we're going to...
Commissioner Casella, you mind if we let other board members?
I'm sorry, I didn't see his hand up. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Laurie, the one that, the magistrate that handles community standards, do we still have that magistrate?
That's, yes.
How much does that magistrate get an hour?
I, I'll have to look, sir. I don't have that on top of my head. I can get that to you tomorrow.
Well, I need, I kind of want to vote tonight. I'm not trying to be facetious, but anybody...
I don't know.
Mark, do you have any idea?
No. Okay. I have to ask. Sean, I don't know.
Because I don't, I don't want to, you know, put a magistrate, you know, one getting more than the other one, you know? Can we just table this until we get some information? I'm just saying, you know, because we need to look into it. I'm with Commissioner Casella in regards to going to a raise $60 more dollars an hour. I know the mayor says yes, but I'd like for all those to be on the same keel. If one is getting 200, one is getting 160, everybody needs to get the same thing.
Yeah, I would agree with that as well. Thank you for bringing that up. Second that motion to table? All those in favor states so by saying aye.
Give me a second.
No, it's already been first and seconded for to table.
I understand. I would simply just...
But you do not, I'm sorry.
Discussion, please.
You would have to withdraw.
I would ask that it not be placed on the consent agenda again. That's what I'm asking.
Expedite the rules, they have discussion.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. All those in favor states so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? The item D is tabled till next meeting, that, to be put on, I guess, old business.
Just for a point of information, Mayor, you being a certified attorney, with board certified attorney, would that...
I'm not a board certified attorney.
Okay. Being attorney, would that any conflict of interest in your voting on this?
There's over 80,000 attorneys in the state.
Well, I'm just asking about you particularly. Would you have any conflict, not 80,000, of voting on this issue?
No, I'm not a licensed magistrate or a mediator.
Okay.
Motion to approve said agenda. Do I have a second? All those in favor? Aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes unanimously. Moving on to bids and purchases over 100,000. Item A, proposed resolution number 17-108. Authorize the city manager to sign an annual service agreement with Motorola, Inc. in the amount of $117,320 for the continued maintenance and repair of the city's radio telecommunication systems as a sole source vendor. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor states so by saying aye.
Aye.
Proposed resolution number 17-109. Approve utilizing National Joint Powers Alliance EZI QC contract with Johnson Low Construction LLC of Orlando, Florida for design and construction of modifications to the utility administration building for a not, a not-to-exceed price of $250,000. Authorize the city manager to sign the proposal and detailed scope of work. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve for discussion?
Second.
Right. The reason I, I'm just going to say discussion is that when the citizens see that we're spending $250,000, this is more or less like really for the safety of the employees who works out there. I don't understand what it was until they explained everything to me. This is something that really needs to be in place.
In addition, also, the fact that the funds are coming out of the utility budget, not the general budget, is also a point of clarification that should be made.
All right. All those in favor states so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Proposed resolution number 17-110. Approve and authorize city manager to sign a five-year renewal agreement with Census USA for advanced metering infrastructure in order to maintain the standardized metering equipment and maintain the meter reading efficiency that has been achieved. Estimated five-year cost is $415,000. May I have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve for discussion?
Second.
Right. I just want to ask Colin, I'm just saying, how, yeah. Oh, boy, I like that rushing.
I've asked for...
When we put the system in, how long has, has the system been in place in the city of Boynton?
This Colin Groff's the city manager. You would call me up to ask us something before I was here.
Oh, gee, yeah, I sure would.
But it was, when I got here, they were finishing up the project. And so it's, it was about a five-year project. So I think we've had these for about six years. I got the answer right. So we've had this system for about six years and it replaced a previous system that didn't work very well.
I just want to tell you, thank you, but that's what happened when you're one of the oldest people sitting up here, you kind of remember things. Okay, go ahead. I'm good.
All right. Any other further discussion?
How long is the lifespan of this, this project?
This is a meter project. Meters, depending on the size, are changed out at different times. Typically, a residential meter, we, seven to 10 years the meter lasts, the electronics about the same timeframe. We replace so many every year. It's just a routine replacement every year of, of a certain percentage of the meters. And, and again, census is simply the, the sensor and the software package that reads these meters and puts over radio waves and brings it back to our billing system so we can do accurate billing. And we also can provide that information every 10 minutes on water usage and all that, all that kind of information on people's utility usage. So it's hard to answer that question exactly how long, but meters are seven to 10 years. Some, you know, that's an average. So it could be 12, could be less, but...
Airhouse of them as well, as well as parts. We do some, some interior or inside repairs when we can and then when we have the arrangement with census, to those that are not repairable that we have to swap out. And when technology changes, do we get the upgraded technologies in it as well?
Yeah.
So it's a constant replenishment, but we've gone through the entirety of the city, 30-something thousand meters, 35,000 meters.
She should be answering.
Yeah, Winea is the, she's our meter expert.
Winea is the expert, not me.
And have gone through and with the exception of maybe 1,000 or so customers left with odd arrangements possibly where there's a meter in the backyard and we can't get it moved to the front. So to be able to swap out, there's some unusual cases, but for most part, they're all swapped out. And that was, again, that was over a three-year period it took to get it done. So we're there now. It's just maintaining and keeping, keeping working.
Further questions? Seeing none. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. All those in favor? Aye. All those opposed? Am I the only one saying aye?
Aye, well, we got it. We're waking up at 8:00 now.
Okay. Motion passes. Proposed resolution number 17-111. Approve an agreement with Kayla Dunton Levine Porter and Vey of West Palm Beach, Florida for financing auditing services for the city of Boynton Beach for the fiscal years ending September 30th, 2017, September 30th, 2018, and September 30th, 2019, with audit fees for each fiscal year of $106,725 and the three-year total amount of $320,175 for an RFP that we put out. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved for discussion?
Second.
I'd like to ask Staff, is this a new company or if not, how long have we been with this company?
Tim Howard, Assistant City Manager. This is a renewal. We've had this company for the last five years and they were at the end of the renewal cycle, so we went out on the street to solicit RFPs and received eight responses and they were ranked and they ranked number one. And the fee is set for each year for the three years.
Okay, that's information for the public. I'm ready.
All right. And we've never had any problems, I guess. All right. All those in favor states so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passes. Item E, proposed resolution number 17-112. Authorize the city manager to sign a support agreement with Public Safety Software Solution from Spillman Technologies, Inc. and to sign financing documents with Motorola Solutions Credit Company, LLC to finance the purchase price. What is the, the purchase price?
Purchase price is $925,000 for the police software. This was a result. Do you want to make a motion first or do you want me to?
Let's make a motion.
Okay.
Motion to approve for discussion?
Taken.
All right. Yes, Tim?
This is the result of the...
Let me ask my question so you listen.
Okay.
How much did you get them down from?
All right. This was the result of the RFQ that we had for the police software. You had previously approved the ranking and we negotiated with the top-ranked firm. Their proposal came in at 1.1 million to start with for all the modules for the police software. Through negotiation, staff was able to get them down to $925,000. Staff was also able to negotiate annual maintenance cost for this system for years two through seven, two through six, five years, with a 3% cap increase each year. The initial proposal for the year-two maintenance was $120,000. Staff negotiated that down to, I think, around 85, 86. I may be off by $1,000 and guaranteed a 3% increase for the next five years. On the financing side, what we've, what they proposed and we were able to negotiate was a $350,000 down payment that we have budgeted in our capital improvement fund. This project was funded over a six-year period in our CIP. Last year was the first year we budgeted and then this year, so we have the $350,000 cash to pay a down payment. We'll finance the $575,000 over four years through Motorola Credit with four annual payments of $156,000, thereabouts, per year. The budget that you had in your CIP was about $190,000 a year. So we're within budget.
And this is, could you, I guess, explain a little bit about what the software does for the, the police department?
Captain McNeven, that's the committee chair for this project. Basically, what this project is going to do is really, really increase the efficiency for the police department. As it stands right now, worst-case scenario for an officer, if he were to respond to a DUI crash where he had to make an arrest and use force, he's going to have to open up at least five different programs to complete that arrest paperwork and the entire report. With this system, they're going to log into one program, they're going to work in one program and it all talks to each other. All the reports will work together. The names copy into the different forms. So the efficiency is just going to be incredible for the officers. So it's going to be a huge benefit for the officers to increase the amount of time or decrease the amount of time they're going to be spending, spending working on reports and get them back out on the streets.
Yeah, let me ask the question. I'm glad you said decrease the time, because a lot of times when we ask questions of police officers, that's, that was parked at the family dollar. They say, well, we sit here because we're doing reports. I'm glad you said decrease, so I should see less sitting and more writing.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. I'm good.
Any further discussion? All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Authorize, item F, authorize utilizing the State of Florida alternate contract for the purchase of Daytrium DVS computer nodes, data nodes, and host software from Transource Services Corp. in the amount of $186,329.56 the city is allowed to purchase from State of Florida contracts. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion?
Just like for them to tell the public what we're doing. Briefly, because you're one of the ITS guys.
I'll let Johnny through.
I try not to get too technical. John McNally, ITS director. Basically, this purchase and the item below it are related to the same purchase, is to replace our, our servers, our storage at three key locations. One at Fire Station 5, our main data center, another one at utilities, and the third location being our off-site disaster recovery location. Our existing equipment is at or near end-of-life for most of the components, and so this is replacing that infrastructure at those three locations. Any equipment that still has some useful life left in it, we are keeping and we are repurposing it as part of this project as well.
How long have you been here?
I've been here since 2000.
I'm set. We're good.
And this is a surtax project? Is, are we using surtax funds, Tim?
Yes.
Yeah. Sales, the sales tax funding, which is allowed for some technologies.
It's on, it's on the list.
I do have a question.
Yes.
I look at the rankings, and the next company that came in line ranking was almost $100,000 above the one that we chose. So are we not just choosing the lowest bid, but also the best firm in terms of technology and?
You are correct. We are looking at both the, the most viable solution, the one that has the best options for us, as well as price. So it's a combination, and this solution does have both the, the most robust set of features as well as the best price. Charles Stevens, my network manager, did what some of the other city staff have done. We, we beat the vendors up about the price. We were able to lower this.
About 250,000 less than-
Can you speak into the mic, please?
Sorry, yeah. We were able to get the pricing down about $250,000 less than the NASBO contract pricing. The company's young, and they're eager to get more clients.
Now, don't say you beat anybody up in the police offices that year, you know.
Financially beat them up.
Okay.
Not physically.
All right. Any further comments? All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Authorize utilizing the State of Florida's alternate contract for the purchase of Avaya Network infrastructure equipment from Step CG in the amount of $64,735.52 the city is allowed to purchase from State of Florida contracts.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion?
Nope.
All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion passes. Approve utilizing the Palm Beach County, Florida sole-source solicitation with Ioxum Water Care, Inc. for MyX DOC Anion Exchange resin with the same terms, conditions, specifications, and pricing. The maximum anticipated annual expenditure for the purchase of MyX DOC resin is $275,000. Palm Beach County has complied with purchasing policies and consider this as a sole-source provider of resin. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved, sole source.
Is there, is any discussion? Saying none. All those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? Motion is passed. Next, we are moved to public hearing. The city commission will conduct these public hearings in its dual capacity as local planning agency and city commission. Jim?
Ordinance 17030, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida authorizing abandonment of a portion of the 20-foot-wide alley right-of-way immediately west of 711 North Federal Highway and immediately north of Northeast Sixth Avenue. More particularly described herein, subject to staff comments, authorizing the city manager to execute a disclaimer which shall be reported with this ordinance in the public records of Palm Beach County, Florida, and providing an effective date.
Both. Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? I'm going to open up to public comment. Saying none. May I have a roll call, please?
McCray?
Aye.
Commissioner Romulus?
Yes.
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yes.
Vote is five to zero.
All right. Ordinance 17031, an ordinance of the city of Boynton Beach, Florida amending land development regulations, Chapter 1, Article 2, definitions, amending Chapter 3, Article 4, Section 3D, Table 3, 28, Use Matrix and Footnote 57, to add definitions, use provisions, and standards that regulate the medical marijuana dispensary industry, providing for conflict severability, codification, and an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Any discussion? Saying none. Going to open up to the public comment. Jim, does she need to be sworn in?
No, she does not.
Okay.
Indy Falco, DeCarado, 316 Northwest First Avenue. I know you're calling it a marijuana dispensary or cannabis dispensary, and for medical purposes. I called there specifically just to find out what really was going on. You can just walk in off the street, and that wasn't, again, what was spoken when the idea even came about. It was supposed to be in an inconspicuous place. People were already supposed to have already had seen their doctor, who already told them that they were going to go in there with a prescription and purchase. It is a walk-in, it is with, you don't need an appointment. Also, I called them, and so I asked them. I said, so how do you know if you need marijuana or not? And the gentleman said, well, you know, we'll have a doctor come in, and it's going to be $199, but if you qualify, you don't have to pay the $199. It's just a money-making venue. This is not, for the majority of people who have chronic pain, we have other medicines, this is going to be detrimental to those who have mental illness. You saw NAMI here. We deal with mental illness. You see the homeless, mental illness. We see so much mental illness, and I don't think any one of you have considered the situation with people who have mental illness who smoke marijuana. There's a gentleman that walks up my street every day, and he tells me he's proud he smokes pot, and he can't get a job, he's not working, he's actually from Haiti, here illegally, and he just walks up and down all day long, because he can't think in his right mind. THC is a known, it is known as a mind-altering drug. You know, you want for the monies, for the tax dollars, for whatever the motive is behind it, it's really not for sick people. And as I stated, one other gentleman, his big issue was because he didn't want college students to not be able to get into the profession in which they choose to get into because they have it on their record. How sad that a whole group of people, and if NAMI's here, how many people are, that you know, sir, what's his name? The Hayes, Mr. Hayes?
I ask questions.
That have mental illness?
Uh-uh.
It's huge. I can't ask him, okay. But I did not understand why the mental health has not been up here fighting for it, and it's even in their books. I mean, I would ask you to please do some more research. I know a lot of people don't understand, they're not from the 60s, 70s, and 80s with the residual. I know Mr. Casello, Commissioner Casello is, and he doesn't see things as anything wrong, but that doesn't mean that other people haven't recognized nor noticed. Maybe there is some things wrong, but he just doesn't see it because, again, it's a mind-altering drug. And I want to leave you with that, and I really hope you do your due diligence. Again, as you're, as Jeff, the gentleman, that was the, before he did what he did and had an affair, had made marijuana so protected that, well, he did, and he's no longer going to be our representative, thank God. But anyway, that's not the point. The point is, is that he said that he can put one anywhere he wants to, you guys can do whatever you want with it, and how sad. I really hope that as leaders of this community, for the public safety of this community, for those who do have mental health, you really think about it before you expand this any further. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Mayor?
Yep. Just to clarify, I think that it's, as unanimously as could be stated, I don't think anyone on this commission supports people who have mental illness smoking marijuana, you know, to, to further, you know, create problems for them if they have the mental illness. This, this is something that has been overwhelmingly supported by the residents of Boynton Beach, the residents of Palm Beach County, the residents of the State of Florida, and collectively the United States. If you, if you look at any reputable survey in, in the past decade, have shown a majority of people support medical marijuana, if not further recreational marijuana use. So, you know, this is something that is, is inevitable, and it's something that is used for, for medical purposes at this time, and could eventually be used for recreational purposes if you look at the trends throughout the country. I don't think that people who have, you know, who will see detriment from the use of marijuana, medical or otherwise, should use it, but I don't think that that means you should prohibit its use to, to other people, just like any other substance that's, you know, legally prescribable or any other product in society. If, if some people misuse it, that should not necessitate the prohibition of that product for all other people. So, you know, I fully support this, and, and I look forward to, to the businesses coming into our community. I look forward to the residents gaining access to this, this necessary, you know, medicine, and I look forward to not interfering with doctors and their right to advocate for patients to receive the best care that they could medically prescribe, so I fully support this.
All right. With all due respects to the lady who made a comment-
Can you please state your name and address for the record?
Okay. Matthew Arivalan, 5102 Mahogany Dry Pointon Beach, Florida. With all respect, with all due respect to the lady who made the comment before me, I like to make a comment myself. As far as I've studied about medical marijuana, there's no scientific data to relate mental illness to THC. And also, people who are suffering from chronic pain and seizure would be able to, would testify in terms of how much it helps with their pain. And also, the lady mentioned that there are other medications that are available. There is a huge epidemic of opioids in this county, and the more people turn to other medications, like other narcotics that are opioid-related, there is, we are going to see more and more increase in people getting addicted to prescription paints and other forms of opioid like heroin. So I would, I see that as a bigger problem. So I, that, I'd like to comment. That's my comment.
Thank you. All right.
Mr. Mayor, I just like to put my two cents in real quick. I'd be more concerned with someone who's suffering from mental issues having guns versus a joint. That's just my personal.
Yeah, all right. So any further comment from the board? No. May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I have a second?
Huh? I think you might have already motioned a second, but.
All, may I have a roll call, please?
Commissioner Romulus?
Oh.
Commissioner Casello?
Yes.
Mayor Grant?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Katz?
Yep.
Commissioner McCray?
Oh.
Vote is three to two.
And our last item for the meeting is new business discussion of number of boards people are allowed to serve on at one time, attendance policies, eligibility rules, and qualifications of members for all boards.
This backup, which was put together by the city's clerk, clerk's office, which I think is really well-done, contains the information regarding the current composition of the boards, board requirements, terms of offices, and then at the end of the agenda item is a comparison to the other municipalities in the county with respect to the number of boards and other comparable information. So any elements of this that the commission wants to address or change, we would be doing that either through a comprehensive ordinance, if you want to have uniformity of requirements or conditions, or individually by board. So a number, one or more ordinances will come back to you to modify these, if you want to change any.
There are any specific recommendations? I don't remember the, the kind of origin of this discussion. I guess because some, some people were serving on multiple boards, and maybe the rule states that technically they're not supposed to, so I don't, I don't recall the, the genesis of this, I suppose.
The issue was the limitation on individuals serving on more than one quasi-judicial board, that being a board where they would have the final say, maybe subject only to appeal. But those conflicts are really basically eliminated under the current policy, and I don't really see any here that would come into play anyway that don't move on to the commission for final decision.
So, Jim, what you're telling us now, we don't have a problem now. This is what I'm hearing.
I have not seen a problem arise with respect to any conflict on any of these boards. I guess the clerk could speak to whether she has seen some on boards that we don't attend from the city attorney's office.
There's no real problems. We do have a little thing with the reappointments are in December, but some boards are in April, some boards are in March. It would be good if we had all the reappointments at one time, so everybody would know all the board openings would come up, but that's strictly your discretion. Some are in April, some are in June, historic preservation, and then there are a couple boards where the members have no term limits to be reappointed.
Would it be appropriate, since, since you might be the, the person most familiar with the procedures from handling them, to, to request, you know, any, any glaring issues? Did you see, like, the, the date inconsistency, that you might be willing to proffer those if there's more than just that one to us?
Sure. Come up with a staff request.
Because I think you, you would probably have the best view since you handled, you know, the, all that.
Okay. I can do that.
Thank you very much.
Let me ask you the question. I'm trying to go back when I said earlier, didn't we have, will we appoint all boards at one time?
Yes. And December is generally the month where we reappoint the boards.
Okay, let me ask-
Board members whose terms are expiring.
Okay.